Meeting for the City of Eldridge, Iowa on Monday, November 18th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Roll call?
Blackwell?
Present.
Campbell?
Present.
Collins?
Present.
Docree?
Present.
Yossi?
Present.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Looking for motion to approve the agenda?
Aye.
Second?
Motion by Docree, second by Campbell, to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? The ayes have it. Number four, presentation from Mid-American on a community grant. Dave, are you here?
Yeah, I'm right here. Hi, everyone. I'm pleased to be here. I'm David McCammon with Mid-American Energy. I live in Eldridge, and I'm the community length for the company to the city. Have a $500 check to present to the city, community grant. It's going toward new flags, some replacement flags on the flare row that get put out, and some lighting, decorative lighting on North Second Street. So, where do I go with it now? Give it to Mr. Sayer.
Thank you, Dave.
You betcha. Thank you. Aaron, want to take a picture? Can you do that?
Is Aaron here?
Yes. Aaron, you want to take a picture? I find this interesting. They called me and said, if you take a picture, this is our world now. I've got to cover the account numbers.
They'll blow it up, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, it makes it a little awkward.
Thanks again. More shade for the light.
Hey, Laddie, while you're walking past, I think somebody leaned up against the lights. If you could play around there so you can get the lights there.
There we go. Thank you. Is the government class during this evening?
Oh, yeah.
Would you state your name and where you're from, please? What town?
Um, I'm Ava West. I live here in Eldridge.
Okay.
I'm Zaya Mara. I live in Davenport, but I go to the Scott.
Okay.
I'm 63rd and Eldridge.
Thank you. Brian, you have any comment for him?
Yeah, you can see by the crowd, we have a lot of issues tonight. You picked a long meeting to come to. We will definitely try to have you out of here by 10:00, 10:30. All goes well.
It all goes well.
All right, we're on to number five now. Now, this is public comment. If anybody has anything they'd like to talk about that is not on the agenda this evening, now would be your time, because when we get down to discussion about land to run, there'll be a second time for the public to speak about the housing addition. So, this is for anything else you'd like to talk about right now. And if you do, go ahead, go up to microphone and state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Dolores Ranson, and I want to address issues related to the detention pond. We were recently informed by the original landowner and the developer that they neglected to transfer the property on which the detention pond is to the, to our HOA. And he wants to do that immediately.
Can you state which detention pond? Because there's, there's several in Eldridge.
It, it's the one on Pinehurst at 111.
Okay.
West Pinehurst.
Thank you.
And so, he wants to transfer it now. And I'm unsure whether our HOA is willing to receive it or not. But what I wanted to ask the council was if, how far you are in the process and how soon you will be accepting transfer of land to the city. I know you don't answer questions during this time, but that's one question that I have. And could he then transfer it directly to the city rather than the HOA and then the HOA turning around and transferring it? The second issue is the original landowner also informed us that he has received a property tax bill and that he is not going to pay it. So, my question is, why is the county, first of all, why is the county taxing detention pond land? Doesn't make sense to me. And so, I was wondering if you had the answer to that? And if not, if someone could investigate that? That would be helpful to us. And then, the third thing is that, at first glance, as I look at, at the situation with detention ponds, it does seem to make sense that all detention ponds would be transferred to the city of Eldridge. For two reasons that I can think of, and I'm sure there's many, many more. But one is that it should be managed by someone who has expertise in the area of managing detention ponds, I think. And secondly, the detention ponds serve more than just the homeowners in that area. We have two, 22 villas. I'm sure that other homes in the surrounding area are served by the detention pond. And so, the question I have is, I've read in the paper about how the city will manage the detention ponds. My concern is, I'd like to know what management means, because I've looked around at some of the detention ponds in the area, and frankly, they're eyesores. There's weeds, tall weeds, there's small trees, there's lots of big shrubs growing in there, and they just truly are eyesores. So, my recommendation to the city is that you look at the detention pond at 111 West Pinehurst and use that as a model. The sides and the floor of the pond are well-maintained. They're all green. There's no weed, well, no tall weeds, no shrubs, no trees, no junk growing in them. And so, it's, it's really nice to look at, unlike the others that I went to see. So, I'd really like to thank you for your time, and I appreciate your consideration of these three things that I mentioned and your timely response to both questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dolores. Is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Marilyn Ranson. I'm representing the Black Hawk Villa Association. We're right off of Black Hawk Trail, and I want to talk about retention ponds. We're having a problem there. The owner of the pond has presented us a petition saying he wants to quiet-bead the pond to us, the property. And we do not want to be it, because we're not the only ones that drain into it. And when the last home was built in our association, there was never no finished paperwork. So, we don't even belong into that pond. So, I think we have a problem, and we're in a legal procedure now, and we've spent over $3,000 already. And our hearing isn't until March. So, we feel the city should own them, maintain them. We'd be more than happy to pay some kind of a fee for that. And also, Ryan spoke at your last meeting about Stone Brook, and that's out by us also. It's an isolated one, landlot. Well, we are too. But Stone Brook has their owner there. He has a lawnmower. He maintains their ponds. We do not have a lawnmower. We've asked the fellow who does our lawn service if he would be interested in mowing it. He said no, because the sides are too steep. You need a bigger tractor, I feel, to mow it. So, I just want you all to be aware, there are problems out there with the retention ponds, and there will be more. I think Jeff knows about that. Thank you. Keep it in mind.
Is there anyone else? Go ahead and go up to speaker.
Dale Granal, 409 South Schultz, Long Grove. On a happier note, I just want to say thanks for taking the gravel off the side of the bike path and putting black dirt in. I hope you go all the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Is there anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to number six. Six A, consideration approved amendments from our regular council meeting on November 4th, 2024. Do you hear motion?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Yossi, second by Collins, approve the amendments from the regular council meeting on November 4th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? The ayes have it. Six B, consideration to approve the joint city council and utility board amendment meetings from November 4th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Campbell, second by Blackwell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? The ayes have it.
I may be to chop you up, I'm sorry.
That's okay, and thank you. Six C, consideration to approve the bills payable. Does anybody have any questions for the bills this evening?
I am good. I'm really good.
Okay.
No questions.
Okay. With that being said, do I hear motion to approve the bills tonight? Do I hear second?
Second.
Motion by Blackwell, second by Yossi, to approve the bills presented? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? The ayes have it. Seven A, consideration of the third and final reading of ordinance 2024-14, amending Chapter 8 Title C of the Eldridge City Code by adopting new building codes. Jeff, is there anybody called in on that?
They have not. But a very dapper, Mr. Ray Nace is here to speak on a few lines.
All right, I just want to check with you. Thank you, Ray.
Yeah, just a reminder, this is the third reading. This is in cooperation with Davenport, Metendorf, and Scott County, and the other smaller jurisdictions within Scott County, so that we can all stay on the same construction codes. That way, contractors don't have to learn different codes when they build across city borders. This is for the International Residential Code, Building Code, Fire Code, and Swimming Pool and Spa Code. And we've received no complaints or comments since the last meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Nace? Thank you, Ray. Do you hear motion?
I have motion to approve third and final reading of ordinance 2024-14, amending Chapter 8 Title C of the Eldridge City Code.
Second?
Motion by Docree, second by Campbell, to approve the third and final reading of ordinance 2024-14. Roll call?
Yossi?
Aye.
Docree?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Blackwell?
Aye.
Ordinance 2024-14, amending Chapter 8 Title C of the Eldridge Code hereby passes. Seven B, discussion and consideration to approve the Eldridge purchasing authorization policy.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is the policy we've discussed a couple of times. I was asked to put it back on the agenda for further discussion, so we can make some progress in moving this forward. So, a couple of just quick notes before that discussion opens up. There are not 14 pages. I just haven't read the page numbers yet. You only have 11. That's the full draft of the document. We can update the date of the version on the top once we get to that point. On pages two and three, where you're looking at vertical and horizontal infrastructure, those amounts are set by the DOT effective January 1st of each year. In January 2025, the threshold will be 82,000 for virtual infrastructure instead of 81,000. And for the horizontal infrastructure, instead of 65,000, that threshold will be 62,000 for January 1st, 2025. Just a reminder that we do have the credit card policy in place. We do have our travel and expense reimbursement policy in place to go along with this document. This has been a citation that's been a repeated finding on our city's annual financial audit and will again be a finding this year. The finding from our auditors being that the city does not currently have a purchasing policy. It's identified as a repeat finding, and the recommendation is that the city should have a purchasing policy that specifies approval amounts and supervisory level requirements. The city should have a travel policy that specifies allowable travel, travel approval requirements, and reimbursements.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start first, because I asked to get this put back on the agenda, and it's something that it's been, I think, two meetings now since we've had on the agenda. So, I think it's important for a couple of different reasons. Number one, having the purchasing policy in place. But number two, because it is on our audit finding, I think it's important to continue pushing this through until we can agree on how we want it to look for a final product. So, I'm going to make a couple of the recommendations that I kind of penciled out and had discussions with, but one of the things that was discussed was the limits for department head, city administrator, and then at what point it comes to city council. I'm personally fine with the $5,000 limit for department heads, but I could also be flexible on that number if it needed to be lowered because of the consensus of the group. I would recommend that the city administrator number be dropped from 24,999 down to 15,000 or somewhere in that area. And that would put it basically at the same threshold as the aggregate amount of $15,000 that, for change orders, within that 10% margin on approved projects. Aside from that, the other thing that really stood out to me was the employee reimbursement part of it. And I understand there is a credit card policy in place, but because that's not black and white on here, I kind of wanted to dive into that a little bit more. And I think it's important that we want to, I know it's common practice now, but I'd like to see some language in there that says that employees using their personal credit card should be deemed an emergency situation only, whether their city card failed or however that looks. But anytime there's travel or training, clothing allowances, all those are things that could be planned or should be planned ahead to where the city card would be used. I'd also suggest that we have one or two city cards that can be signed out from somebody in City Hall, that if an employee goes on business trips or needs to use a card, then that card is signed out and then signed back in. So, there's accountability on, on who has that card. And then, the final thing is having a comprehensive list of who has cards, and then evaluating how often they use those cards. Do they need those cards? If they're only using them a handful of times a year, then probably the short answer is they don't need a card. Not suggesting taking cards away from people, but as we grow and add employees, we can evaluate who needs cards. And I probably agree with some other council numbers. I don't think we need cards in everybody's hands. We need to monitor that, keep that, that liability reduced. And I think there should be limits on cards, not a daily limit, but a monthly limit. And when that limit is met, then it would be the city administrator's job or somebody designated to that to go in there and unlock that, to extend that, that purchasing power for that month. I think that's, that's the kind of ideas I, I came up with. I'd like to see this. If it's something that we cannot agree on tonight, we move it forward to the next meeting and get this, this over with.
Kevin Ray and I talked this afternoon on some of these issues, and we're, conceptually, we're aligned fairly well. However, my limits are much less. Because DOT came out with a threshold, doesn't mean we have to as a city. If you look at all the thresholds out there right now, and the odds of it happening all at once are nil, but that still could be up to 10% of our annual budget is our exposure of credit. I question if everybody in the town, full-time employee, needs a card. I think first, we have to review that. We may, as Ryan alluded to, go back to what we did in the old days, and that was have a couple of credit cards up at City Hall. They checked them out, they brought them back with receipts. Not only do we need to look at monthly amounts, I think we need to look at transactions per day. Previous months in our credit card, if you went through the statements, you'll find that people exceeded what their monthly credit amount was posted on their card. We got to get an answer to that, too, because if we set limits and the credit card company does not honor our limits, it's no good. So, I agree, we won't get this done tonight. Mr. Campbell volunteered me to rewrite this about three, four weeks ago. I've been out of town for the last two out of three weeks. So, it's something we need to, to look at, get a policy, but there's a lot of things in this document. You know, are we better off with a couple smaller side documents, like the credit card policy versus a purchasing policy? Do they have to be combined? I don't think they do. But no, there's some work to done, to be done on this, but we should advance it forwards. But as it's right now, I'm a big no on it.
Scott, do you have any input on this right now?
I'm agreeing on this, and this has been, really, a couple of weeks ago that Nevada brought it up, and we've done nothing, and she's had no communication from anybody on this. I like Ryan's ideas. I get that Ryan's been on vacation, but since you're back now, Brian, you might have time.
I'll go over to your house, and we'll do it together.
What a great idea.
You can type, I can't.
But I think we need to follow Ryan's advice then and get done a new agreement that's taken care of and have it on our agenda for December, so that we can move on, especially as Ryan noted, because it's on our audit, and we've been recommended numerous times, it's time to put this to bed and move on.
I want to thank the administration for being proactive with this, given the financial neglect of the past. Thank you for being proactive and coming to conclusions that something's been done that we're running, so stop regards to this. I'm in favor of what it looks like now. Only thing that I have on it is, well, I echo with Ryan's with that. Many organizations, even municipalities, will just have credit cards for the managers, so those can be signed out as well and/or you go through approval through your supervisor to make those purchases. That way, that's being looked at, meaning alligators being tracked and all signing amounts. So, I like that. It's, it counts for more fiscal responsibility here from a city standpoint, but everything else in there, purpose-wise, you know, it looks, it looks, it looks well. I think that that would, you know, be real to us now, not only now, but the future, as we're looking at finances. So, thank you, guys.
I think it's important that we keep things moving forward, just because we need Nevada to be able to do her job on a daily basis, when she has to wait for our meetings for our regular day-to-day operations. It really slows her down, slows the city down. And we've, we've talked about this at least for two months, and it's time to put it to bed and just come up with a number that we all agree upon and then move forward.
Should you guys want to sit on this for another two weeks and let Brian bring something forward, or enough of you like Ryan's idea?
I'm willing to. I mean, I, I would be okay with approving this tonight, and then, so it's good to go, and then if they make changes later, that's fine. But I also understand, you know, Brian brings a lot of expertise as well, and so, I just want to make sure it's a plan. I don't want to just say, let's move it forward. Let's have a plan, and how we're going to do that, that's on the agenda in December, so we move forward.
Brian, do you think two weeks is reasonable to give you time for getting back?
If Scott types it for me, we can have another two weeks.
He's a good typer.
I can't.
All right, so we're in consensus. We'll bring this back on the, the next agenda.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Seven C, consideration to approve the obligation of the remaining ARPA funds' balance of $55,093. Nevada?
Thank you, Mayor. There should be a memo in your packet regarding the ARPA funds. The City of Eldridge originally received $1,021,925 for the ARPA funds. Last year, we spent $165,141 on new equipment for the police department. There was a remaining balance to be spent of... We spent $803,400 recently on a purchase agreement to purchase a parcel of land for future expansion of our public facilities. There remains $55,093 that we need to obligate by the end of this year. It needs to be dedicated to a specific project in its entirety, so that we don't have to give that money back. A couple of the ideas that have come up so far, we do have a telephone system that's going to need to be upgraded. The software that supports it is going to become obsolete as of 2026. So, we do have a quote. We received several, but Tri-City has provided a quote of $21,804 to completely upgrade our current phone system with the same software, just an upgraded version, and then the new physical phones to go with those at the desks that currently have desk phones. We do need some new office chairs and at least one new desk at City Hall that could be purchased with some of those remaining funds. There has been a suggestion to use it as to enhance some of the safety pedestrian crossings for First Street. I know currently, we're working with the DOT on a study as to what those safety enhancements might look like and what funding might be available out there for that. So, we just need to make sure we're going to put it towards that, that we've got an answer by December 31st of this year. And we could also put it towards some of the cost of some of our current projects that we have already approved, such as the traffic signal at Fortin Leclerc or our engineering for our public facilities project, any one of those current projects we could put the remaining funds towards as well.
Nevada, do you have an estimate on closing fees for the property with title work, recording fees, attorney fees? Do you have a ballpark on that?
I did ask for an estimate on that. I don't have that back yet. So, based on the timeline that we have to obligate the funds, I would say it would be wise to set 5,000 back, and then anything above and beyond that, we would just cover with our budgeted money for legal representation or legal services, just to make sure that we do in fact have all of those dollars obligated by the timeline. If I am able to get an estimate ahead of that, I can certainly send that out as well.
My recommendation would be probably, A, put money aside for closing fees, because it's tied to that parcel. B, the phone system that's City Y. And then, C, we could pay or partially pay for a signal across First Street. Pedestrian. Pedestrian, across.
Nevada, or Jeff, we're going to be staying in regarding sidewalks there in Iowa. So, we have some discussion with that, and probably something's going to be possibly written in to some future projects, and all contact the landowner. So, I know we have representation here for the school district. That gets used a lot now with the kids, going back and forth with Rusty Ridge neighborhood. We talked about the safety concerns there with kids and strollers, bikes on bicycles. Maybe the, we look at the city, either alone or jointly, we have the sidewalks and... Maybe we look at the city, either alone or jointly, we have the sidewalks, pedestrian crossways on First. I think Iowa Street needs to be done, down there in the car wash, the next 240-year-old. So I think we really need to spearhead that with the growth and development down there and just seeing the kids, not only high school kids, but the other kids, back and forth on that. I think that's important. Possibly, I know we spend, you know, monies with the police department for new technology as well as we advance and grow. I think that's wise to keep the community safe and officers safe as well. So, thank you.
Dan, Brian, you have anything else to add to that? Or what do you think about approving the phone system and sitting on the rest till we have closing costs?
I would agree with that, with Brian's recommendations, and it doesn't necessarily have to be in that order. I think all the ideas are good, but we know that that phone system's a must. We know that we're going to want to spend some money on closing. That would take out a little bit of half that money right out of the gate, and then I think spending the rest of it would not be a problem with any of the ideas that are on the list.
I would agree with Ryan. I like pedestrian crossing on First Street. I mean, would we have to have some kind of a study done for that, probably Nevada? From Shire.
So that's currently what that TEEP study is being done by the DOT, and we should have that report done. I believe their estimate was to get it to us in early December, so then we would have to look at what project we would be able to have those funds completely committed to and approved by the council in December.
Okay.
Brian, would you like to make a motion that we would spend the money on setting $5,000 back for the closing, covering the phone system? And then the third item would be the desk and the chair upgrades that are necessary for City Hall? And then at that point, we could use the remaining money on some of the other projects. We could decide that at the next meeting. Do we have an idea of what the costs are for the chairs and desks?
Yeah, I could live with that. I mean, then the balance, we should have that study back on crossings on South First Street, because, you know, as I've said for a long time, we need crossings on South First Street, maybe one up on Pine Street, or not Pine...
Price.
Price Street. But yeah, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Okay. Do I hear a second, Ryan?
Second.
Motion by Dockery, second by Yossi, to approve the expenditure of some of the ARPA funds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? The ayes have it. Okay, when we start the meeting here, I told some of you, if you're here for the Lancer development, there'd be another open session. So number 8A here is, I'm looking for a motion to open an open hearing for rezoning of the planned residential overlay for 206 and 208 South Fifth Street. Motion by Dockery, second by Collins to open public hearing. Roll call.
Aye.
Dockery?
Aye.
Yossi?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Blackwell?
Aye.
Okay, we're in an open session, 7:35. If there's anybody here who wants to talk about that project, now's your time, and go up and state your name and your address, please.
Your Honor, it's a three-minute.
Yeah, and there is a three-minute limit for conversation.
Good evening. My name is Shane Edge, I live at 542 West Valley Drive. I'm here to present a petition to deny the rezoning of planned residential overlay for parcels known as 206 and 208 South Fifth Street. North Scott Community School District's request for rezoning designation of R3 with a planned residential overlay would allow them to build multifamily homes that will negatively impact the adjoining property owners, the immediate neighborhood, and greater Eldridge community. Multifamily homes are not consistent in fitting with the design and architecture of the surrounding R1 zone, single-family homes and properties in the neighborhood. Property values of adjoining R1 single-family homes would be negatively impacted by the proposed low-cost and affordable multifamily homes. Three-fourplex multifamily attached structures built close to adjoining property owners will impact light and airflow, essentially creating a two-story wall that will overshadow neighbors. Increased housing density will further negatively impact traffic on South Fifth Street that currently struggles to handle the current demands of the neighborhood, schools, and facilities. Additional traffic congestion and additional intersections and crosswalks in the dense high-traffic area will create life safety concerns for pedestrians and children walking to and from school. Increased housing density creates increased fire risk, combined with traffic congestion and limited access to the development for emergency responders creates a safety hazard. There will be increased stormwater volume on the existing drainage infrastructure in place that struggles to handle the current demands. The proposed development places the responsibility in maintenance and repairs of additional water retention and drainage on the development's future residents and homeowners association. A simple homeowners association will not have the resources to appropriately maintain critical infrastructure that impacts surrounding properties. This will increase surface runoff water to lower-lying adjoining property owners that the proposed retention pond will be unable to capture. Adjoining property owners' yards will flood with the runoff and cause additional groundwater concerns and additional pressure on some pumps. We, the undersigned, urge City Council to deny the proposed rezoning, residential overlay, and proposed plat as currently submitted for consideration, undersigned by 63 residents and 42 property owners.
With permission to approach? Go ahead. Thank you. Is there one, anybody else would like to talk on behalf of the homeowners in the area?
Hi, I'm Eric McAvan, I'm at 505 West Prairie Vista Drive. And right now, one of the biggest points we have is the traffic in the area. It's like school, morning and afternoon, school activities, conference, whatever else, we can hardly get one car down Prairie Vista the way it is with all the traffic. And then adding all these houses to it's just going to make it worse. Also, since school has started, the stop signs have been up, and I can sit in the driveway every night when I play with my kids outside, and I lose count within 15 minutes of how many cars are running that stop sign between 25 and 40 mile an hour, and they're either racing down Prairie Vista or down West Valley Drive along with South Fifth. And there's been many times I've had to pull my kids back from not being hit outside playing. Like eight years ago or so, when I first moved in there, where there was like one family with kids on my short street, and now there's like seven or eight of them right now, constantly out there playing all the time. And then, like I said, it's just in January, I come home early in the afternoons, I can, my driveway is normally blocked by somebody waiting for their kids after school. Well, that's my bigger concern, is the traffic right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
You want to restart me before I...
Thank you.
Get ahead of that 440.
I'll be down. Larry Schroder, I live on Valley Drive here in Eldridge. Without a doubt, there's definitely a safety concern in getting emergency vehicles down in what you want to be have a high-density area. I think the water problem is something that needs to be addressed, and you want to start? I am, I don't want to talk too long. The water, the water off those buildings would be, I think, already is terrible in that area. Unfortunately, it doesn't bother me, but my neighbors just get hammered, it seems like there'd be heavy rain. The other thing I kind of didn't quite get, I was at a planning and zoning meeting, was the overlay district. In the description, it says it provides flexibility development, and releasing developer from some compliance with the district site and structure requirements, and providing a small increase in density. You're, I heard the developer the other night, he goes, without this high density, they could only probably build nine units. You're now talking about 16 units, and that's a 77% increase. That's, in my opinion, is a lot more than small. I would love to have that percentage shooting free throws. So I just, I think there's, there's just not the right place for this. It just doesn't seem right. I just, I just can't, I just feel bad, these neighbors looking at these tall 20-by-100 backside of buildings, and somebody having a building 10 foot from their property line. To me, this just isn't right, so thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else that might address the council?
I'm Dawn Spring. I live at 546 West Valley Drive, and I'm concerned with the, the traffic that is happening on Fifth Street. The city back in 2011 approved the high-density future map use of the community of that particular area, but since then, there have been significant changes, especially at Ed White that is impacting the area. Ed White students, and back in 2011, the population at Ed White was 443, and today that population is now 554 students, which is 111 more students than we had back then. At the junior high, we currently have 538 students, and the high school, 1,086, which means that we move 2,178 students daily in and out of these buildings that are all within close proximity to one another. This puts a huge increase on traffic demand on our street and, of course, our student safety. In addition, the new state mandates require that we have open enrollment, and at this time, our district has 365 students openly enrolled in North Scott. Not all of them are at these buildings, but approximately 40 are at the junior high along with a similar number at Ed White. These families have to transport their students to and from their original home base to Eldridge, traveling only on Fifth Street is the only way to get to Ed White or the junior high. Also, we have a situation now where we bus students from Ed White to the neighboring communities to Long Grove and to Donahue, and these families that are taking their students to be transported out to this area, or districts, are also bringing those students to Ed White, which also creates a huge demand on the street. So Eldridge is growing, as we know, and the congestion on Fifth Street is as well, and currently, all streets that feed onto Fifth Street have alternate routes for residents to take in an attempt to avoid the congested mess during school hours and sporting events. However, the street that is in this zoning proposal only has one point of entry, and that is onto Fifth Street directly in front of Ed White. If this becomes a multifamily development, it will only compound an already strained situation. A few years ago, City Council denied a smaller single-family street to be built at the south end of the junior high sports field. At that time, the board determined that the increase of traffic would be unsafe, and the proximity of this multifamily development directly across from Ed White poses an even greater safety concern. So in my opinion, to approve this R3 rezoning plan would be reckless and not in the best interest for the safety of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council?
Jim Perkins, 530 West Valley Drive. Regarding stormwater drainage, the proposed retention pond is going to tie into existing storm sewer event and drainage behind the homes on the south side of West Valley Drive, which stays with approximately three feet of water in it year-round, and backs up to neighbors' houses. The drainage system can't help. Backyards along the drainage have water that comes in and feeds their back doors. This will add more volume, causing serious concerns for flooding. The planning and zoning meeting made mention of care of the maintenance of the retention pond and outlet controls will be responsibility of the future homeowners association to take care of it. They did not say it would take care of it until then. It is doubtful a simple HOA will have the knowledge or resources to maintain this critical infrastructure. It's unreasonable to place such responsibility on and allow a private HOA to have control over critical infrastructure that will have the ability to impact and flood neighboring homes. Neighboring homes already struggle with runoff and high-water retention. This proposed site sits higher in elevation by several feet than the homes on the south border. The homes in this neighborhood do not have buried sump pump drains to tie into. This means additional yard flooding from the sump discharge lines that terminate into the yards and oversaturation of the ground. The homes on the north side of West Valley Drive have pumps that continuously run and have nowhere to drain to. Such water in these yards overflow, so much water in these yards overflow onto the front sidewalks, and ultimately into West Valley Drive. West Valley Drive has water that runs all the way from South Fifth to South Eighth, because there's nowhere for the water to go. There are no stream drains on West Valley Drive between these intersections. In the winter, the intersection on West Valley Drive and 6th and A Street freeze with excessive ice buildup. The retention pond is going to produce mosquitoes and other insects as well as drawing nuisance, well, drawing nuisance wildlife. The retention pond is not going to capture all the surface water runoff around the development. Buildings that will be close to this 10 feet to the property line in some locations, gutters and downspouts will add surface water to the close to the property lines, close to the property line. There are thousands of roughed-in square footage that has to drain somewhere. This is typically driveway, sidewalk, street, storms, and sump pumps. Storm drive.
That's it, Jim.
One more sentence.
Well, that's up to the mayor.
One more sentence, Jim.
Okay. Section 2 of the ordinance has all ordinance resolutions, parts of the ordinance, and resolutions in conflict with this ordinance will be repealed. Does anybody know which ordinance these are? Because we have not been getting any notices within seven to 20 days, and there's one ordinance, I believe it says that the City Council should meet the first meeting the next month after approved by the zoning committee.
Thank you, Jim. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council?
I would, thank you. I don't have mine all professionally prepared like the rest of these people, I just have a few comments to make. And my first one, they've mentioned too, but there's another part of the congestion on traffic going on South Fifth and Prairie Vista, and...
Ma'am, could you state your name and your address, please?
Did I forget that?
That's okay.
I'm so sorry. I'm Joy Sherwood, and I live at 526 West Valley Drive on the east end. So, okay, now you've ruined my train of thought if I have one. So, okay, so you know it's regarding the traffic. So when we brought this up at the planning and zoning committee, they said it's an existing problem, and that's true, but like Dawn said, it's getting worse. Planning and zoning said it's a police problem, and I know, don't answer me.
Yeah.
I know you're not supposed to, and I don't, so, and I understand that, and it's been a problem, and it's been brought up many times, but planning and zoning said it sounds like we need official crossing guards in more places, and that would be down on West Valley Drive too, because as soon as they get around that corner and get past the congestion, they just tear down the end of the street, and there's still kids walking. And then my other thing is the two-story condominiums that are going in, and we were told that, you know, you can't stop them because they're all up to code. And I understand that, but it's also a planning committee, not just a zoning, and I think something has to be done about that. They're going to stick up like sorghums, it's just not going to look like a, like a community. It's just going to look like we've put things there to make money, and that's not what we want in our residential area. And in point, and I don't mean to... And in point, and I don't mean to ruffle any feathers, but I have to say this, those big, tall condominiums or apartments, whatever they are behind the VP station out there, they are still out of place. They look like they've been jammed in there, and that is not what we want to see when they cover them to town or leave town. It's just an eyesore, and it, it's not a precinct. And that's what it's going to look like in our backyard where we've got these two-story condos here and there. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council?
Hi, Mike Martin. I live on Seventh Street Court. I'm on the planning, zoning board. I just came, because I, we had 20, 30 people our meeting and heard over and over about the water, so I'm not an engineer, but I think, it sounds like there's already a problem there, and if we're adding any more water there, we might be exacerbating that problem, so you might want to think about studying the downstream side of this retention pond and improving that also along with this project if it goes forward.
Thank you, Mike.
Hi, I'm Pam Newberry. I live at 541 West Valley Drive, and I, most of the points that I want to reiterate have already been spoken. I truly believe that there is going to be nothing good that comes from the traffic situation. We are already overcrowded. You put another 16 family homes or whatever, townhomes plus houses in that area, you're only going to exacerbate that. Also, there's a couple of other points here. When we went to the meeting the other night, Joe and Colin both stated that the proposed homes need to be built as cheap as possible and to pack in as many, into the proposed plan as possible to divide the development costs among each lot and home, otherwise it would be unaffordable. Cheaper homes and R3 zoning will impact our surrounding property values. If zoning R3 is granted, is there any guarantee that there will be no rental properties added or allowed now or in the future? I know they said they would put a clause in there saying they were supposed to be single-family. However, what if these get built and nobody buys them, and they sit? Well, then maybe they'll become rentals. We don't have any control over that, and that will definitely devalue our properties. Joe and Colin also both stated that it's not the intention, but it's possible that they change their minds later for those reasons. What if they don't get sold? We're talking about three, four-unit buildings. He's put a price on them around $300,000. Again, they're enormous buildings in backyards of a residential area. Oh, here's one. Is lot number 14 going to be a rental? Joe and Colin both said that these were going to be single-family homes. Why does the plan show four housing units on a single-numbered lot when the other multifamily structures all show individual lot numbers on there, like lot four, five, six, seven, are one building? But the one building only has one lot number, it's number one. So, why does lot 14 show four units, maybe the other only one lot number? Some of the structures show being built only 10 feet off neighbors' property lines. Two-story structures this close are going to overshadow the existing properties. So, imagine your backyard, go 10 feet beyond it, now there's a two-story building. Also, what goes with that? Garbage cans around the outside, stuff. There's a lot to consider here, and I'm truly hoping you listen to all the points we brought up. They are our homes. It's our neighborhood, and we don't want to devalue it. We've moved there, we all moved here for a reason, and it wasn't to be crowded like in the city, it was to have breathing space and green space, which actually, there's...
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council this time? All right. Thank you for...
Joe studying superintendent schools. We bought that property with the intent to develop it for our student-built home, and when we said the other night about making sure our costs stay down, we never said about building a cheap house. We said about keeping our costs down. That's why the development fits what the city has within your codes and the overlay, and I would argue that us changing it to a three is better than it currently is, because right now, you, a developer could buy it, build an apartment building in the one zone and build single-family homes in another, and we're talking about two-story homes, just like the homes that, I think about three-quarters of the homes going around it are two-story homes, right? And have garbage cans and all those kinds of things around it. That's what we're really talking about. And I do, I agree, traffic is bad twice a day for 178 days, really bad after school when they start lining up an hour and a half. We've talked about that at multiple joint meetings of saying, what could we do? There's a lot that could be done to Fifth Street. Storm and sewer would be wonderful. Saw a lot of water problems, wouldn't it? We could move sidewalks back, we could get off-street parking. There's a lot we could do as a city and potentially as a school district to solve them problems. Bottom line is, if we want to develop, I know development's tough for anybody who has homes nearby. It's like sidewalks. I was on a city council. Everybody loves sidewalks. Do you put it on their property? Everybody loves cell phones until the cellphone coward's in my backyard. Everybody loves development and increasing values until it's in my backyard. We want to, we want to make good homes. We want to make affordable homes for families as a potential entry level. We want homes that our kids can build. I also have to be able to do it in a manner that makes financial sense, and the plan we put together does that. I'll let our engineer and our, the developer we're going to work with explain some of the other things that have been said, but I just want to make sure you know that. We bought it with that intent, and I think we actually improved the water with the storm sewer. We improved the zoning versus, versus its current zoning right now. There's a lot of things we actually do improve in this area. We don't improve the traffic, but we know that the traffic needs to be improved. We've talked about it probably every year since I've been here, this year 11. At some point, it, as we, it needs to be addressed. My guess is at some point, the city will need to address storm sewers on Fifth Street as we grow as a community too, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Olson, 301 South Sixth Street. I'd like to speak about the aesthetics of it. I live where the four, the four complexes are going to go. There's four pieces of property. Now, you imagine from where I'm standing to that wall, there's going to be a two-story wall with maybe, I think it's six feet between the two buildings or something. I may be wrong on that, maybe it's 10 feet. But there, I mean, we're looking at two stories, and then we're going to be looking at one-story single-family homes. Aesthetically, that's not a good neighborhood. Visually, it just seems kind of like things are out of place. Like somebody mentioned, you just put it there, you know, stick it there because it fits, trying to stick a round egg into a square hole. The other thing is, we live in the west. Our front of our house is the west, and the wind comes down that street. It is going to hit that wall. Now, I don't know what is going to happen with airflow, all that runoff is, is not going to go down to the retention pond. It's probably going to be going into some of our property there, too. We just won't have the airflow. We won't have the, the sun. Just aesthetically, it just is not a neighborhood, and we're not keeping in what we want Eldridge to be, a good neighborhood for our kids, and it just, I just don't see it. Thank you.
I'm on 275th and Long Grove. I'm the developer, working with the school on this. Just wanted to kind of address a few of the things. The other day at planning and zoning, we were talking about bringing the, the opportunity for some entry-level homes. The values of these homes, actually, if I look at the assessed values of every single home that surrounds this development, our entry level is actually more valuable than what any of those entry-level homes, or these entry-level homes are more valuable than any assessed value that touches this property. There's going to be no new crossings. That's a misconception that was spoken about here earlier. There's not going to be a new crossing going across the road there. They're going to go right to Valley into the one to the north. When we were putting this development, development together, we followed the city codes, we followed everything that's already been in place. I think Joe just mentioned it, with the long-term plan that was put together by city council years ago called for this to be a multifamily. It could be, it could be a 50-unit Section 8 building going in there, quite honestly. What we're proposing is a combination, all of them being single-family homes. When the person earlier stated that there was one lot with four of them, this is a preliminary plat, so it's an error that's going to be worked out. They're all going to be single-family homes. We're talking about 16 new homes, that's it. Okay? That's the thing to remember. One of the things that Jeff said the other day when somebody brought up the rentals, there's nothing, I think it's in the state of, state of Iowa, nobody can dictate whether a house is rented or not whatsoever. I did take the opportunity to go, because I got, you know, I had some concerns coming out of the, the meeting of the planning and zoning because of people talking about traffic, and more so, I was concerned about the water. So, I took it upon myself on Friday, and actually ran into a couple of the residents. One or two of them are here today. Spent about an hour and a half walking and seeing what was going on. I then did some further research, trying to look at what was really happening with the water scenarios. Our engineer will show to you that the retention pond will slow the rate of the water coming off of that lot right now, where there's already zero retention whatsoever, okay? So, that's got to pass not only our engineers, but it's got to pass your guys' engineers as a secondary, a secondary source. When I went out there and walked around, one of the things I found that was quite interesting, and I've got copies of this right here, is that the addition that everybody's talking about, the Nuttview Estates Fifth Edition, has a 15-feet, 15-foot drainage management on the back lot lines of all those southern homes. In walking that, multiple residents have built fences, played trees, created dams that have caused a lot of problems for Dan all the way up at the very beginning that's right next to Fifth Street. So, that's an issue that a lot of the residents have actually created there, to be quite frank with you. The other thing I also noticed that was also quite interesting, and I've got copies of that too, for anybody that's interested, is that entire rear yard area, in fact, three or four of the homes on South Fifth Street, or on, on Valley, on South Valley, are actually in a flood zone. That entire area, that whole thing is a flood zone. So, it's something to take into consideration, you know, when you're looking at this entire thing. So, it's an existing condition that's there, but you got to look at what the drainage measurements are, you got to look at the flood zone scenarios that already exist that people bought, and kind of take some of that into consideration. But we just want to help entry-level homes to get the student bill program successful for another four years. That's the biggest thing for us. So, thank you.
Hi there. Chris Townsend with Townsend Engineering, Davenport, Iowa. I won't add a whole lot besides, you know, really, every job we have, this is the biggest challenge, is stormwater runoff, really, and Eldridge is worse than most places, quite frankly. We've done several developments here. High groundwater, very flat, just difficult. We know what we're up against, we know what we need to do, and there's some valid points here. You know, I've walked the site several times too, and I know what's going on here, and we know we have some challenges, but what we do have to do, and I know in the last meeting, you know, people are shaking their heads because it is hard to comprehend because they see what's going on now, that there's a lot of water going on coming from the north. What we'll do, and we've done some preliminary engineering, this is, once this gets, if it gets approved, then we go to the design stage, but we have done some preliminary engineering, and we know what we're up against. There's water from the north, north of our subdivision, proposed subdivision, you know, that's coming to this site that we're going to have to deal with. But the idea is, and I think you guys know, this detention basin will take all this water, and I know it does look like we won't get it all, and we can't get some of it, we know that, but we will pipe all of the hard surface, will definitely get piped into this detention. Any backyard, downspouts, back roof, downspouts, will get piped around. And I don't think this came up, but there were some concerns about sump pump water. You know, well, you guys are smart and changed your ordinance a while ago. Last few subdivisions we've done here, we have to run drain tiles that actually we tie into now, so those sump pumps can't just go out to the yard and into the street and freeze and have problems. It'll go right to our detention, which is great. I mean, so you guys are doing the right thing. So, that's one thing that'll help. We'll get it all there, and then we have some off-site water that we can kind of trade a little bit with. But like I said, there's one pipe going out of this thing to a ditch that's really not great that Colin just said is in floodplain. So, there's a lot of things going on here. If that's our job figured out, if you guys have a shy pattern, please review us, make sure we're doing our job right. So, if something isn't working, if they don't like what we want, we're going to have to change it. That's as simple as that. So, we're, we know, and we agree with everybody here that that's our biggest problem. So, I just wanted you guys to know that we're, we're going to handle that. Thank you. Oh, one more thing, sorry. There was, that, somebody brought up that lot 14 to show is one big lot. That is a mistake. That should have been four lots. I mean, that's just, that was just a mistake on our part. So, that, they will be individual lots, just like the rest of them, so they can sell those off as homes.
Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council on this matter right now? Okay. 8C, excuse me, 8B would like a motion, make a motion to close open session right now.
So, Luke. Second.
Motion by Campbell, second by Doc Reed to close open session. Roll call.
Blackwell.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Doc Reed.
Aye.
Yelsey.
Aye.
Open at 806. 8C, consideration, the first reading of ordinance 2024-15, rezoning of 206 and 208 South Fifth Street to R3 multifamily residential with a planned residential overlay. This is just the first reading. This is not written in stone. Go ahead, Jeff.
Let me address the petition because I've got that called up here, and I will read to you what that means. So, we don't forget that, and then we'll move on, and I'll give you the summary, and I can feel any questions from you at that point. Approval or denial of application? This is for an amendment, which is what this would be. The council may grant or deny any application for an amendment provided, however, in case the board, that should say commission, but it says board, but it means commission, it's an error in our city code, does not approve the change or in the case of a protest against such change, signed by the owners of 20% or more, either of the area of the lots included in such proposed change or by those immediately adjacent in the rear thereof extending the depth of one lot or not to exceed 200 feet from there, or those directly opposite lots filed with the clerk. In this case, it was, and it was submitted to you, but you can decide whether that's valid or not valid. Such amendment shall not be passed except by the favorable vote of three-fourths of all members of the council. So, you received the petition. If we assume it's valid, it seems like it's signed by pretty much everybody adjoining, is that right, Shane? So, so you've got the 20% and more. So, that just basically means that four out of the five of you would have to vote to approve this in order for it to pass. It couldn't pass on a three-to-two vote. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I am going to shut this. I'll minimize in case we have to come back to it. Then I will go to the memo. So, the first thing that when staff is presented with the rezoning application to look at is the comprehensive plan and the future use map. So, when I did that, what I found was that in 2011, when the comprehensive plan was made and approved by council, that this plat was tagged as high-density residential. And that is shown in your packets. There's a screenshot of that. It's highlighted in orange, and that is labeled as high-density residential, which equates to R3 multifamily district in our zoning areas. Why they weren't named the same thing, I don't know, but it was called high-density residential, and R3 is our multifamily district. So, that is what they're applying to change it to, so it meets the city code or comprehensive plan, future use land use requirement. If it didn't at that point, I would have denied the application as a zoning official, and then they could have submitted a challenge to go in front of the Board of Adjustment to see who was right. But it does meet it, so it proceeded to the next step, which was then a staff review. So, at that point, myself, the building official, both public works directors, and the water and utility department heads reviewed the plan along with the city engineer. and the water and utility department heads reviewed the plan along with the city engineer. When reviewing the plan, we found that it was in accordance with city code. The planned residential overlay wasn't written by any of us in this room, but it is part of city code. It does give some relaxed setback requirements with some other stipulations, and I also included that in your packet for you to look at, what those stipulations were. Basically, in this case, what it does is allows them to have a twenty-foot front yard setback on the condos on the west side, instead of the twenty-five-foot setback that city code says you must have in our three residential district. The back, the rear yard setbacks remain at thirty feet. That is the setback requirement in all three of our residential areas. So any adjoining property, any adjoining lot would have to meet the requirements of the adjoining lots next to it. We do run into a weird thing here, as Mr. Edge pointed out. Where behind his property, we do have the side of a building, and on the opposite side, on the north end of that, we have an area with a setback of ten foot from the property line, which is more than enough to meet the side yard setback, but it's in his rear yard. And again, this is allowed by the planned residential overlay, you know, planned residential overlay rules. The city staff that review this and city engineer believe that that meets that requirement. So then, the city staff found there was in accordance with city code. It went to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Last Thursday, the Planning and Zoning Commission did unanimously approve rezoning the planned residential overlay and the preliminary plat. And now it's in front of you today. I will address a couple of items that some of the community members brought up. The first being the density. Basically, the planned residential overlay gives them leeway in the district that it's being rezoned to. Currently, this is some kind of weird half R-one, half R-two split zoning. So we've got a split parcel here. That normally wouldn't be allowed under city code right now. Somebody wants to split a parcel, we would require a subdivision, you know, to do that and keep one parcel, one zoning, one parcel the other. I don't know when this was done, but the larger lot here is split between R-one and R-two. They're requesting to zone to R-three. So there is no density increase in R-three zoning here. As Mr. Wood stated, if there were apartment buildings are allowed in R-three districts. If they were to build an apartment building here, the density would be much higher than what they're proposing. So what they've got here is not an increase in density over any other R-three district. The stormwater is brought up quite a bit. I believe Townsend Engineering has explained what the detention pond is for. I believe all of you understand what the detention pond is for. We're currently looking at our own stormwater ordinances right now. But state law, and then therefore Eldridge code, says that they have to detain all the water on that property in this detention pond. Currently, that water is undetained. Currently, that water just flows to an inlet that takes it across the street to the creek, undetained. The only, in theory, the only way that any water is now going to make it into that inlet is if we get a hundred-year storm and it overflows from the detention basin that was proposed on this property. Someone talked about the owner of the pond, who maintains it. City code says that the developer and owner of the pond, which is the developer, has to have a plan on how it will be maintained. One of the acceptable plans to do that is with an HOA. Our city code says that, they say that's the plan. If it's never turned over to the HOA, city code says that the owner of the pond is responsible for maintenance. So to answer the question about who maintains the pond until it's turned over to the HOA, city code says the owner of the pond does. So, and there are enforcement provisions in city code that the city can take if that doesn't happen, and we've taken them before. There was, talk about the notice for these meetings. City code says that for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, a letter must be sent to adjoining property owners at least five days before the meeting. They were sent, they were put in the mail by me seven days before the meeting, so that was met. It also says that rezoning signs need to be placed ten days before the public hearing here tonight on the property that was done. Notice was placed in the North Scott Press, not this Wednesday, but last Wednesday. That was not more than twenty, and more than seven days before this meeting, so. And these aren't Eldridge codes, these are state law. All the requirements for these meetings have been met. Traffic issues were brought up. I know Mr. Campbell and I went out and looked at the traffic today. We can talk more about that, I think, in a minute. Currently, rentals keep being brought up a lot. These aren't apartments, these are owner-occupied dwellings. But it doesn't matter whether they are or aren't. Rentals are allowed in any residential district within the city of Eldridge right now. So none of that matters. I could move out my house tomorrow and put it up for rent. I live in an R-one, the most strictest zoning residential district in the city, so. I think they addressed a lot without the individual lot. That wasn't addressed by city staff because they're allowed to have one lot. If you look at the condos by the golf course by Restic Ridge, one side of that, that has about twenty condos on it, is all one lot. Yet they individually sold all of those to different people. It doesn't make any difference to ask the city whether it's on one lot or four lots. That's up to the developer to decide. So they said that they're going to change that on the final plat. That's also acceptable to do that. Trying to make sure I covered everything here for you that was put out. Oh, the existing issues. I know Mr. Woods touched on that a little bit. That would be to the south of Valley Drive. That's a whole other conversation, I think that can take place if you want it to take place. I mean, he gave you some insight as to some of the things that are going on there. He is correct, there is a fifteen-foot drainage management along there that a lot of trees and fences have been built into. Structures aren't allowed to be built in drainage easements. He's also said that that is zone A flood zone, and he is correct. That entire area is zone A flood zone. So that's a conversation, I think, probably for another time. I don't think it pertains to this development. This development is by state law and Eldridge code required to detain their stormwater, which they presented a plan to do. So, staff-wise and zoning official-wise, we say no reason why this plan shouldn't be accepted because it meets city code. I am, Jeff Scott, you want to talk about the traffic at all, or you want me to do that? I've got some notes, if you want me to.
Doesn't matter.
Okay. Let me get a drink first. I don't usually talk this much. Scott and I went out there today in the rain, so you'd think there'd be more parents picking up children today than there would on other days because of the weather. Scott did notice people lining up as early as two fifteen. I went over there about three o'clock with them, or a little bit before. People are parked illegally in the grass on both sides of the street. They begin doing this. Scott observed the first people doing this, even before anybody had pulled into the driveway at the school. So people began illegally parking to pick up their children, even before the driveway at the elementary school was full. They did pull up the street. Again, that's illegally, you can't drive in people's grass, especially when it's private property, which include the apartment buildings. But the elementary school let out at three o'clock. Mr. Studing had announced during the P and Z meeting that they've timed it before. It's basically a ten-minute delay. A lot of the audience argued with him. We did find that Mr. Studing was correct. So the school let out at three o'clock. At three oh five, there was, starting to get a little bit of congestion. We were parked in the church lot as if we were a resident in this proposed community. So at three oh five, if we wanted to take a right turn, we would have had to probably wait a little bit as traffic was moving through there, but it was moving. We could have turned out, we might have had to wait a minute or two to do that. We could take a left-hand turn during that time. At three ten, cars parked on the east side of the street. It's right in front of the elementary school, we're gone. At that point, we could make a left-hand turn if someone let us out. We did notice there was probably five other cars with us in the parking lot. All of them left in the time that we were there. Someone did let them out to make a left-hand turn. Turning right was still difficult, there would have been a wait time. At three fifteen, we could turn left or right. When we looked toward the junior high, we could see some congestion down there. But, so this is, this is then your ten-minute time period that Mr. Studing had talked about, and it did last from three oh five to three fifteen. Then Scott and I waited two minutes, and then Scott pulled out to drive toward the junior high. Everything was totally, Ed White parking lot was totally clear at that point. And then we drove toward the junior high, which was also totally clear. Not a bus, not a car, anywhere there, and it was basically a ten-minute delay. During that ten-minute delay, we could have gotten out of that parking lot if we wanted to and turned either direction. So that's in our unofficial traffic study, I guess that's what we found. So maybe we save the city ten thousand dollars on the traffic study, I'm not sure. But you guys can, you know, view that yourselves, or we can do a traffic study. I did have a resident call the day that was interested in traffic numbers on Fifth Street. We don't have that. They haven't attempted to reach out to the school district yet to see if they have that, but we did have resident inquiring about it. There were a lot of cars in the past during that time period. But that's all I have, unless you have some questions for me.
Does anybody on the council have any questions for Jeff with all that information provided?
I have comments, gentlemen.
All right, go ahead, Brian.
I've always been supportive of the school district, from day one. I thought when this was originally purchased, they were going to build a home a year back there, single-family home for the class. This drawing is far different than that. One gentleman said that there's sixteen units, or sixteen structures. There's sixteen structures, but I count at least twenty-four residents because of the fourplexes, if I see in that way.
I think there are sixteen, there's...
Sixteen structures, but some of them are multifamily structures.
Well, there's, there's, there's two fourplexes to the west, there's one fourplex to the south, and there's four single-family homes. So that's, that's all of sixteen residences, sixteen homes.
So the three on the north side of, as presented in the drawing, West Brookview Drive are single-family homes?
Correct, and the one, and there's one to the south, and Mr., I'm sorry, I'm not using my microphone. So Mr. Studing presented at the P and Z meeting that, yeah, the four single structures will be single-family homes built by the student-built home program, and that will get them four years' worth of homes to be built. They said that they went into a partnership, and they're here. I mean, you guys can ask them questions if you'd like to clarify this. But what was said at the P and Z meeting was that the purpose for the partnership with Diamond Builders was to get the infrastructure in, and then Colin Woods would get his money out of it, you know, for the infrastructure, whatever arrangement they have, for doing that. I mean, there's a lot of money here initially in streets and sewer and stormwater, you know, and water mains, you know, all that stuff that needs to be initially put in. Whoever does that, if that's Colin, I guess he's looking for, you know, to get his investment back out of that, make some money. Why it wasn't, you know, all the other way, you know, I don't know. I mean, you can call some of those guys up to the microphone, ask them if you'd like.
No, me out of principle, it seems like, just this is my opinion, my opinion only, with the school district becoming a developer, I don't think that's right, whether it's a joint or a non-joint. My opinion is if they're building single-family homes, want a year for the students, I'm all for that. When you start getting to multifamily, they also stated this is going to be built out in four years. Test Street, we know we have a problem on it. We've talked to the school district about that, it's coming up for resolution, but it hasn't changed in the last four years that I'm aware of. You know, the comment was, there's a problem there. Do we want to add to that problem just because there's already a problem there? I don't. The residents on south side of Valley Drive, all that water going down through there, Ed White has a detention from their last development. There's a lot of water that goes down through there from the junior high. Granted, the house on Eighth and West Valley Drive is infringing upon the drainage area. But I believe a variance was granted by that by Board of Adjustment years ago because the individual built a swimming pool there. There are fences there, some of them have to flop. But Mr. Townsend, he's a smart man, he can figure out drainage, you know, how to control this property. But we do need to look downstream. But my main thing is, this is a development. It's not specifically for student-built homes. And I'm not willing to add more congestion onto Fifth Street that everybody in this room knows there's already a problem on it and nothing's been addressed. So my opinion on this is I'm going to vote no on changing the zone.
We have had, as a council, here at my time, on the council, a fairly good relationship with our school district. I would love to see that continue. Mr. Collins is a great developer, cares for the community. Just look at his houses and the quality of the homes, not only here in Eldridge, but in Davenport and all the areas around here, very good quality, cares about the reputation with that. Mostly enjoys working with students and giving them a trade, a skill that they can take as they graduate and working the, working the field, working the trades if they, if they so choose to do so. So I would, I would like for us to continue and continue working. So I would like, of course, to continue and continue working with them. But I know I've been a big advocate too on Fifth Street. My daughters are, you know, are beyond the Ed White stage and the junior high stage, so I don't have to worry about all the congestion. But I know that there's still congestion there, and I feel bad not only for the parents who have to drive there every day, but also the neighbors who live along there and through there. Hearing the concerns there down Valley, I wasn't aware regarding the speeding. So I would hope that there would be more traffic enforcement down there and around the schools too, kind of likely seen during the first day of school. Maybe that would send a message to speeders down there, especially the children, that, hey, so there's kids here, slow up. Regarding the flooding down there, that's a sucker deal. Family who moved there really enjoyed the neighborhood and close to the schools, but they were concerned with the flooding. This family goes to my church, and they have since left there. So yes, there's obviously concerns there. I walked that probably 10 years ago and noticed the barriers down there. Don't know, can't look back in the past and change things, but of course, that needs to be addressed. So, or it's going to continue, it's going to be hindrance for everybody down in Valley if those structures aren't removed. Hearing the concerns from the community members here with the petition set forth, we didn't have that, you know, beforehand as a council. We just had preliminary drawings and started to talk to individuals or community members who might approach us. But I'm having this new information here and having people speak regarding their concerns. I'm not really for sure if it's going to really affect your property value, but I do understand, I get it from a safety standpoint, the traffic and water issues, which could adversely affect your insurance. As for right now, I'm probably the biggest person against tabling information, so I kind of despise when we do that and we put stuff off, but I would be in favor of tabling this until we have an opportunity to look at it further to what was provided, to what was said from Jeff here, from many community members who want to approach us with that. Because I feel that maybe, that there couldn't have been better communication, and this is an opportunity for all parties involved to work together to make sure that any misconceptions are answered clearly and precisely and professionally as possible before we continue on this standpoint. If we had to vote on the issue tonight, I would vote. I love the school district and our partnerships with that. But hearing what I'm seeing and hearing what I am now, I'm not for sure if I'm in favor of it. I would like to see more because I have a few questions as well. As for right now, with those concerns for my community members, I don't think right now that I could really, really support that. Thank you.
When I first saw this, I was trying to figure out how is the lot going to fit back there? And so over the weekend, I went out and walked it. And then today, Jeff and I went and took a look at it. And I also want to say I really appreciate all the work that Jeff has put into this. I know the P&amp;Z meeting was a long meeting, and he did a really good job of summarizing what happened at that meeting, so we all had information of what that was like. Today, I met with him in Nevada and wondered some other things about this. I too am a big proponent of the school, and I think that we as a city need to work hand-in-hand with them. But as I see this, in 2011, when the city passed its comprehensive plan, we set the rules. We determined what is proper for this piece of property. Previous councils say, yep, we want high-identity residential there. And so we set the rules. And the school district played by the rules. They did what we told them to do in 2011. I don't think the school wants to be in the development business. I don't think that's what they're here for. I think they're here to educate kids. I think this is one, and they're educating kids in a sense with the student-built homes, and I get that. But correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, if we've set the rules and they play by the rules and you follow all the steps of staff review, staff review, the P&amp;Z passed unanimously, I don't know how we can't approve this. If we set the rules and they play by them, how can we say no now? I struggle with that. My other big thing was the traffic, and that was probably my biggest concerns, as we all know is a problem, and everybody's talked about that. Jeff and I went out there today, and just what we saw today and envisioned people living along that Brookview Drive, and there were five people picking up their kids in that parking lot, so imagine them being residents. Traffic is not the concern for this development because people could get out, as Jeff mentioned, very clearly, and it was a 10-minute window. Now, I had bigger concerns about a Friday night football game, Ed White open house or muffins with moms or dinners with dads, whatever. I have a bigger issue with that. And I do think that we, as a council, need to address the traffic with the school board. I think that can has been kicked down the road, no pun intended, quite some time, and that needs to be addressed, and I think there are ways to do that. But from my point of view, I don't see us having an option other than approving this.
Scott, the comprehensive plan, the nature of that document is just how back in 2011 people envisioned that property to be. It wasn't a binding changing, or they would have changed the zoning further. Comprehensive plan is nothing more than a working document to give us some sort of direction. I guess the main thing for the comprehensive plan is if what they envisioned in 2011, if something wants to come to town doesn't match that, that's an excuse to turn it down. It's not a rule, it's just a guidance document for how they saw the town develop back in 2011.
Well, I still think that we set the rules, they play by them. Some other developer, if it wasn't the school district, could come in, buy that property, and they could put up three-story condos, much like Grand Meadows or Guyanese BP. They can do the same thing there. I disagree. You might know more than me, Brian, but I think that, like I said, we made the playbook, so we may play by it.
There's a lot to think about tonight, and there's a lot of information. There's a lot of people that really care about their lots, but we have to do what's right. One of the biggest things that, you know, if I was a homeowner, I'd be upset about the 10-foot setback between the buildings and my house, and there's two houses that have that. I was surprised that they can just do a deadhead here and they didn't have to do a circle drive. But again, if we followed all the rules and regulations that we've sent forward, I'm very surprised that it went through. But if they say that it meets what we need, then I guess it meets what it needs. There's nothing right now that holds the water in that lot. And I am very familiar with Grand Meadows because I was on the lot committee with that too. And with the retention pond, as much as that's put on that lot, before Grand Meadows was put on that lot, we couldn't even mow it because it was so wet. Now that Grand Meadows is up and we did everything we were supposed to with Ray's direction, the city's direction, it all goes through the retention pond, it's not wet anymore, and they do not flood the adjoining property at Genesis. So I see both sides of this and, you know, the pluses and negatives. You know, we want to support the school, yet I feel that these things that Colin are putting up, the residents just don't care for. It sounds like they don't mind the houses whatsoever, it's the plexes. But then if you look at the economics of the whole thing, Colin needs to do the plexes so he can afford to put the infrastructure in to build the student-built homes. So we're... It's hard to pick and choose what side you're on because I'm a homeowner in this town, and I don't know if I would want that next to me, yet my job here tonight is to make sure that we follow the policies and procedures of the town. So I'd have to make sure that we're enforcing the ordinances and making sure that all the codes are followed, and at that point, I don't see how I can say no.
Can I address the cul-de-sac quick?
Just, I'll address the cul-de-sac quick because that did come up in both meetings. We would require, it's a 91-foot, 91 or 90-foot, 91 or 92-foot cul-de-sac with a right-of-way you're at 120 feet. You get a 30-foot yard, rear yard setback on that. When you measure this out, they've got like a 10-foot buildable space for a house. City code doesn't say that you can do this hammerhead, this tee. It doesn't say you can't do it either. So it's a situation we're in is this, what their design is not prohibited by city code. It doesn't violate fire codes. So, you know, there is no reason, staff-wise, zoning-wise, to deny it, you know, for those reasons. If this hammerhead is something that, you know, the city decides we don't like or don't want, and I don't think we do, then we should probably codify that so that, you know, it doesn't happen. But again, I mean, this planned residential really gives them some leniency, you know, in some of these things, but you've got a landlocked piece of property that everything's been developed around it. A cul-de-sac just would not fit on this street, on this parcel. We initially told them that that's what we wanted, and they came back and said, oh, it's not going to fit. And so we measured it, we got our engineer involved, and we found out they were correct.
This is a tough one, and, you know, when I got elected, I knew I was going to have to make tough decisions, and this is one that personally I would make a different decision than what I need to in regards to what's best for the city. And the city has had a history of battling a lot of lawsuits, spending a lot of money that didn't need to be spent. And for me, it comes down to what is right here, not what I would wish for if my house was there. If this was my backyard, I would be very much against it as well, but I would agree with Dan and Scott. And with the information that has been given to us, I went back up, met with the city today because I wanted more information. I wanted to dive into it as much as I could, and I just don't, I don't see how we can deny the request if it meets all the needs, all the code requirements. Are we opening ourselves up for additional liability if we turn it down because of personal opinion? Do I wish it? State is all single-family residential's. I think it's a great program. Yes. I understand the economic side of it. If you broke those down and you put 10 lots in, will 10 lots, 10 single-family houses, which is the max that would fit in, that would probably be pushing it? Would that pay for the infrastructure? Would that make it affordable housing? Could the students build it and not lose money on it? So those are questions I have. But at the end of the day, I dissected it into the different issues. I lived on Prairie Vista, a block off of Fifth Street, for four or five years. I understand the traffic issues. I look at those traffic issues as a long-term problem that needs to be addressed. Mr. Studing, I would welcome you to engage and get together in the near future, in the next few months, and start working towards a plan. There's been a lot of things that are always discussed and kicked down the road, like Scott said, and, you know, if this is something that's been a known problem for 10, 11-plus years, let's address it. I look at the traffic on school days. I look at traffic on game nights. Is this addition going to impact that a little bit? But I think the bigger picture is we've got other issues with Fifth Street that need to be addressed. I've had a few ideas that I would be happy to share at some point later on too, just along the east side of Fifth Street, that could help alleviate some of those problems. But it all brings us back to this development. Is there some way that we can deny this request that's not going to wind us in a bind? And that's the questions I would have. If, Adrian, you recommended tabling it, if we table it, that would be a question that I would have for the city attorney to verify that question. Because again, I don't, I can sympathize with why this is not wanted. People on Sheridan, when they had their backyard was the school practice field, and then one day they have a two-and-a-half-story big building back there, the new fitness center for the school. I'm sure that wasn't desired either, but the school owns the property, the school needed that building, and that's where they chose to put it. So I guess that's my take on it. I'm trying to separate personal views from what is the right and wrong answer for the city.
Well, who's here tonight, correct me if I'm wrong, is to currently zone R1, R2. We're here tonight to do changes only to R3 and add an overlay district. There's two different things going on here. You know, I'm okay with just leaving R1, R2 and let pre-enterprise hear what can go in there economically.
As I mentioned before, I'm not really in favor of tabling items, but I believe that this subject matter here is a perfect time to table this, so we can get more information, this council man, yours, he said, regarding the legality. We can look at that as well. I would hope, you know, with the relationship that we have with the school district, nothing would come about that or anybody else. But, you know, I definitely want to work with the school district as well. I think there's a lot of projects that we need to continue on for the safety of our children here in all grades. But I do understand the concerns with the citizens here tonight. So this information was just brought before us, and to take time and to having a vote on it without thinking it through, falling up and having individuals be able to speak with me as well as a representation, I just can't fully make a decision right now if I'm forced to make a decision. I probably know which way I will lean towards tonight, so with that being said, I would like to make a motion to table this concern until my future council meeting.
There's a lot of information that's been put forward, both by all you homeowners, the engineering firm, the developer. Jeff, you did a lot of work. Scott, thank you for working with Jeff to do that traffic study. Like I said, everybody at this board here, except maybe you, Brian, wasn't involved with that city council back then when that was decided and voted upon. But it does seem to match everything that the city has on the books to be proper and built to code. We have a motion on the floor right now to table that, so this idea would not die on the floor right now, it'd just be postponed. I kind of feel we do need to table this, the fact that Jeff mentioned that I am the mayor of the city and you hand this to me, but technically it's supposed to be submitted to city staff. So the fact that it was given to me and not to city staff, I don't want to accept this, not knowing what the city attorney has to say to that. So if you would like to turn this in tomorrow to city staff to do properly what it is, then if we get a second for tabling, then you guys can hand this back to you, you can turn it to city staff tomorrow, the city can check with the attorney, and then we can bring this up at another city council meeting. But that way, the issue, both your issue, developer issue, the school issue, does not die if this is tabled this evening.
I'll second his motion if we bring it back up on the first meeting in December so it doesn't prolong it one way or the other. Maybe we can get some answers by then. Maybe we can get some answers by then.
All right, then, then we'll put that in the motion then.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Blackwell, a motion by Dockery to table the rezoning plan and residential overlay for 206 and 205 South Fifth Street, with the intent that this will be come back on the first meeting in December. Can we roll call or voice call for that? Roll call?
Yossi?
Aye.
Dockery?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Blackwell?
Aye.
The first reading of ordinance 2024-15 has been tabled for this evening, and will come back on the first meeting in December. Nevada, does that affect letter D then?
Yes.
Okay, so I would like to also then ask for somebody to table letter D, the resolution, for preliminary approving that, since this issue is being tabled.
So the second floor is its first meeting in December.
The motion then is to table resolution, the first one was ordinance, this is a resolution 24-28, approving preliminary plot for land to run. It will be tabled till the next meeting in December. Roll call?
Campbell?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Dockery?
Aye.
Yossi?
Aye.
Blackwell?
Aye.
Resolution 2024-28, approving preliminary plot for land to run, is also tabled till the first meeting in December. AE, discussion and consideration to authorize administrative discretionary approval for accused vacation payout not to exceed forty hours for non-bargaining management staff in lieu of forfeiture of each anniversary year. There's been several, well, not several, but a couple employees the last few years with all the changes that have gone on with the city, that were dedicated to the city, and they were not allowed to have enough time to use their incurred vacation that they had, and so some of them forfeit that. So what this is here is being proposed, that the administrator on a case-by-case study would bring forward a payout not to exceed forty hours. So if somebody had three weeks that they didn't use, we encourage them to take the time if they've earned it, but this would allow them to at least financially get one of those weeks back, but they would still forfeit the rest. Nevada?
Thank you, Mayor. Just as the mayor said, this was just a discussion that I thought was worth at least bringing up and bringing forward to the council to consider. It would be for the non-bargaining management-level employees that get to their anniversary date and have either not had the adequate time to use all of that vacation time, or just not felt comfortable taking it. It sometimes can cause more stress in a small organization where your management level and department heads often are doing a lot of operational work, as well as managing, and there's not always someone else that can perform all of those tasks. So it does sometimes offer some challenges for them to comfortably leave for extended periods of time. And once they get that tenure and that seniority, we will run into situations with anniversaries where we do have employees that would be forfeiting a considerable amount of time. And I think it would be worth considering allowing up to maybe forty hours of what they would be forfeiting to pay out, similar to our bargaining unit employees get that chance for overtime or comp time and things on a fairly regular basis with their roles. And they also have a little more opportunity to take vacation time, because there's more staff at that level that all perform the same job duties. So this would allow for the department heads that do get into that situation after earning all of that vacation time to not necessarily have to forfeit all of it if they get into that situation, but to be able to still benefit in some way, to be able to pay out a week of that on a case-by-case basis.
To my knowledge, we've already run a process at once, and that was with Tony Root. And the council made an exception, allowing him to take additional time off within a certain time period, and if he didn't by then, then it was off the table. So in the past, we've always kept our management personnel basically mimics our labor agreements. So I would probably, on this one, I understand, but I would probably wait till we go through negotiations, see how that ends up, and have that mirror image, both union and non-union employees, instead of having two different ones. If someone gets into the shape where they can't take time off because we're through something, council can always approve extending that period.
Nevada, can you explain again what the current benefit is with bargaining members with overtime and comp time, and how they get paid out on that?
For bargaining unit members, there isn't a limit on overtime if they're called into work, they get paid their overtime. They do have an option to put that towards comp time. There is a cap to only accruing forty hours for comp time, but for a bargaining unit employee, once they hit that forty hours, then they get paid out for anything as overtime above that. For a management level, because they're salaried employees, and they often are expected to work those longer weeks, and they aren't eligible for overtime under the Labor Standards Act. Once they hit that forty hours, if they're earning any comp time for special meetings or things above and beyond, within their job duty, they're just working extra hours, they don't get paid out. They don't get overtime. So once they hit forty hours comp time, they've got to try to find time to use that, plus their vacation time and time off, and don't have any opportunity to have any benefit for those extra hours worked, or extra things that they're called in for, expected to respond to.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions on this? Scott, do you have any? No, I would disagree with Brian just a little bit. I don't, I think it's okay in this issue to have a difference between the bargaining and the non-bargaining. I guess I should talk about this.
I mean, we all know that we have certain staff members that go way above and beyond and put in a ton of time, and I think it's okay for the city administrator to have any way to authorize something like this. I don't think it needs to mirror, you know, union and non-union.
Dan, Ryan, do you have anything to add?
I agree with you, Scott. I see there's a difference. I see that, you know, we want people to take that time off, but I also understand that that's easier said than done sometimes. I'm in favor of this, I don't, historically, I've seen it both ways. With other cities, I've seen the collective bargaining units and management have the same, I've seen them have it different. In this particular case, I would support it, and I would make a motion to approve this authorization for administrative discretionary approval for accrued vacation payout not to exceed forty hours for non-bargaining management staff in lieu of forfeiture.
On a case-by-case study?
Yes, it's a consideration that administrative discretionary.
Can you second that, Scott?
Correct.
Brian?
Just last comment, by approving this tonight, you're going to set a standard for a want in negotiations?
They're already getting, collective bargaining members are already getting paid out overtime, and they're able to cash in comp time once it exceeds forty hours.
So we have a thing that we want employees to take time, that's been a past practice, versus writing them a check.
But as the state, this would be capped at forty hours, so it'd be one week. So if somebody felt dedicated, even though they're encouraged to take their two or three weeks, they would not be given a check for two or three weeks to pay vacation at the end of the year, they would only be capped at forty hours. So it wouldn't be a runaway trade.
Correct.
So we have a motion by Yossi, seconded by Campbell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Nay.
We have four ayes and one nay. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nine, activity reports. We'll start with Nevada.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder that the first meeting in December, the six PM meeting, will be joint meeting with the community center board, in place of what is regularly our committee of the whole. Last day for yardways drop-off at the city shop is going to be Saturday, November 30th. It was in the paper Wednesday, November 27th, but in, staying consistent with the years passed, what our schedule is, it's always that last Saturday. So they, Tony will put a sign out front, and we'll propose that they'll still accept that on the 30th, and that will be the last day. I did put out an email regarding janitorial services and getting quotes. We did just go through that process and looking at different options, but we are at the end of the next year now, so just trying to get an idea of whether or not we want to go through that process again. I've had one yes and one no response. So if you have a strong feeling one way or the other, let me know, so I know how to proceed with that. We are getting ready to close out our first and McClure intersection project, finally. There was one curb grant that had to be removed and replaced to meet the ADA standards. I believe that got completed last week, I think we confirmed that. Once that has been completed, the DOT will be able to sign off on that, and we'll finally close out that project. The wetland delineation, the fieldwork was completed last week, and we should be looking at getting our reports on that within the first two weeks of December.
Go ahead, Adrian.
A few years back, the council, they went through the council regarding yard rates and extending it, and at that time, we agreed that it's the discretionary for our city staff to extend that. I know it's been an overly warm fall here, all the leaves or storm trees, maybe the storm tonight took the majority of them off, I'm not certain, but I would look at if there's any means to extend that a week, if necessary, or two weeks, like we have in the past, to go ahead and do that, to accommodate the homeowners here. And also, just want to acknowledge, too, and thank you, putting it on our Facebook page regarding any jackaladers or pumpkins. You know, Thanksgiving is coming up here a couple weeks from now. We do encourage you, with your pumpkins, to compost those, or drop them off at the city shop, or put them on your curb side to get picked up to get composted properly. Or if you've got a compost bin in the backyard, go ahead and put those in there, for excess pumpkins, create a lot of methane gas in the landfill, we're trying to do our apartment that and spread the word, and just make our city a little more greener. So do consider composting your pumpkins and jackaladers, your hay bales, and your hornstalks as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Martha, I'm going to get to you in a minute. Jeff, do you have something to report?
I've been collecting stormwater information. I think I've got everything I can get from Bettendorf. Ray and I had a team's meeting with a lot of their administration last week, and I've got a lot of information collected from them. Letty's helping me collect some information from Babelport, so I should have all that compiled, hopefully in the next week or two, and be able to email that out to everyone prior to the December meeting, and then we can make a decision whether you'd like that on the December 9th, or the following council meeting to discuss it.
Thank you, Jeff. Martha, do you have anything to report?
No, I don't.
Would you like to announce your partner?
Sure. I'd like to announce Lady Goss Klospe, she will be my replacement after I retire.
Thank you, Martha. Chief, do you have something to report from the police station?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one thing, Shop of the Cop is coming up, coming December. It's going to take place December 14th at the Walmart, West Kimberly Walmart. Hometown Holiday, we will announce the children selected for the Shop of the Cop this year. The community has been outstanding, they've been so generous to the Shop of the Cop program this year. We'll probably have about seven children will be able to take shopping this year. So that's going to be huge. We've also invited the fire department this year to join in with it. It should be good, we're looking forward to it. It's a great program, and I know the kids love it, so we're excited about it. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Chief.
Before I make the motion for adjournment, I'd like to, and I don't know if you did this last meeting or not, I'd like to acknowledge and thank Thor Scott High School Athletics for shining bright, representing our district, on the district and state level. So I think they need to be congratulated or acknowledged. With that, I make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion by Dockery, seconded by Blackwell. To adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? The ayes have it. Thank you for coming this evening.
Yeah, they got lucky.
The government plans to bring your paper to the front here.